And welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, June 24th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Mr. Laval is the Chair. We have a deferred paper. We have Bill Number 407. Resolution authorizing and directing the city comptroller to transfer a total of $25,000 as indicated from into the following accounts within the 2020 operating budget. This bill is sponsored by Councilmember Kraus and Councilmember Corey O'Connor. We have new papers. Bill Number 421. Resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Point Park University to allow students under teacher supervision to provide creative and strategic services on a volunteer basis to the city of Pittsburgh on an ongoing project-specific basis such as for marketing for the 2020 census outreach. Bill Number 422. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of littler Mendelson PC in an amount not to exceed $10,112.05 for professional legal services regarding an employee matter. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair. We have a deferred paper. We have Bill Number 403. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the executive director of the Citizens Police Review Board to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Densus Group to provide Citizen Police Review Board with a third-party assessment of and effective plan to address police-citizen engagement and use of force as it is currently deployed in providing for a payment cost not to exceed $25,000. This bill is sponsored by Councilmember Bruce Kraus and Councilmember Corey O'Connor. We have new papers. Bill Number 423. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a five-year professional services agreement with Cover Your Assets LLC for a web-based secondary employment scheduling system in an amount not to exceed $853,925. Bill Number 424. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement with Smith Detection for upgrades to two Sabre 5,000 detection devices in an amount not to exceed Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 416. Resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a temporary construction easement in lieu of eminent domain with the owners of certain property in 18th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Property known as 318 Arlington Avenue and 320 Arlington Avenue for landslide remediation work related to public roadway purposes. Bill Number 417. Resolution vacating a portion of Woolslayer Way beginning at a point on a northerly right-of-way line of Woolslayer Way to its westerly terminus in the 6th Ward, 7th Council District. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 418. Resolution adopting planned revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the CMU Fifth and Clyde Residence Hall and Campus Hub, 4735 Fifth Avenue. And Bill Number 419. Resolution adopting planned revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the CMU Forbes and Beeler Residence Hall at 5087 Forbes Avenue. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the pre-agenda for Wednesday, June 24th. We have one appointment today for consideration. Ms. Sarah Kinter as the Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections. I'm joined by councilmembers. I gotta scroll through here. Councilman Coghill, Councilman Kraus, Councilman Burgess, Councilman Wilson, Councilman O'Connor. And that is all I see as of now. I'll mark you up the other attendees as they join. Would a clerk please read the title of the bills?
Bill 425. Resolution appointing Sarah Kinter as Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections for the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. If whomever is responsible could take Ms. Kinter off of mute unless she needs to do that herself. And Ms. Kinter, if you would please give us your name and a little background on yourself.
Thanks. Good morning, Council. My name is Sarah Kinter. I currently serve as Acting Director for the Permits, Licenses, and Inspections Department. Thank you Mayor Paduto for this appointment. I've been working with the city of Pittsburgh since 2011. I started my work in our Civil Rights Agency, the Commission on Human Rights, where I actually started as an intern and worked my way up there before moving to the Department of PLI in 2011 where I served as the Licensing Officer and the Assistant Director for Administration
Thank you very much. Are there comments from members?
Councilwoman Laval?
Yes.
Yep, I raised my hand as well.
Okay, sorry. I'm trying to keep track.
Yep, thank you.
Councilman Coghill, you can begin.
No, I just wanted to say, Sarah, you know, I overwhelmingly support your nomination. You know, as good as Mara Kennedy was as getting us, you know, permitting online and other things she brought to the table, I didn't find she was very responsive. You, when I call you, you get right back to me and that's the most important thing for me. Not to say I don't believe PLI still has its issues, but you know, I think you're the right person and move forward, so welcome.
Thank you.
Before Councilman, I just want to note that Councilman Gross and Councilman Strausberger have also joined us. Councilman Kraus?
Yeah. Sarah, good morning. How are you?
Morning, I'm doing well.
Good. Thanks for coming in to talk to us. I have a question around demolition and whether or not we budget enough towards demolition and if there are better ways to bid out demolition. I know that federal regulations regarding asbestos and lead have upped the price on demolitions and it does hamper our ability to do as much as we would like to do. But the reason I bring it up is I got a call yesterday from a constituent that I know very well. She's 94 years old and lives in Allentown and she's in the house that she was born in. And next door to her, there is a house that caught fire about two years ago, just shy of two years. And we have put in numerous requests to have the house demoed, but with no luck, we have not been able to get it down to her or down for her. And so yesterday, it was just a reminder, getting a call from someone who has been in their house almost 100 years. She was born in that house. She lives in that house to this day. She's sort of, we like to jokingly call her the grand dom of Allentown. And she's everything that we want in constituency that chooses to stay in the city and invest and be engaged and all those wonderful things, but she's living next door to a burned-out house that has been there almost two years now. And we have to do better. And so I would like to ask you, and not just to put you on the spot here by any means, but to help us do better when it comes to these kinds of what I would call an emergency demolition. But it might not fall under that category, but it clearly needs to be handled. So I just would be curious about your thoughts about these kinds of demolitions and how we can do better with them.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for the question. This is a really hot topic for a lot of districts. I know councilmembers have reached out to me about dilapidated or nuisance properties and, you know, asking if they're eligible for demolition. We have two pots of funds for demolition, our PEGO dollars and our CBPG dollars. As you alluded to, the CBPG demolition process requires a really long runway before we're able to actually demolish a structure due to, you know, proper asbestos surveys, historic review surveys, et cetera. So the ability to, you know, act quickly on that pot of money is very limited. Our PEGO dollars are incredibly limited and at this point, we essentially can only use PEGO dollars when we're called out for an emergency 911. So PLI has architects and engineers that are on staff that get called out per our on-call policy when there's a 911 and there's an emergency. And at that time, we're making an assessment of imminent danger. So there's certainly buildings that are dangerous and we continue to monitor those, but that pot of money is then used for those that are, they're coming down. They're coming down on the public right-of-way and we need to demolish them and make them safe immediately. So we do what we call a curbside bid in those instances. If we had additional PEGO dollars, that's something that we could use for some of these other structures. But something that we're looking at that I would like, you know, council assistance in and certainly your feedback is a more democratic process for our demolition dollars because you know your communities, you know the hot-button properties. And it's just, it's very limited right now, but we do want to take and have a more thoughtful process about those types of structures that the community cares about to be demolished. Now, certainly our job number one for PLI is public safety. So it's our job to ensure that these eminently dangerous structures are taken down first and foremost and that we are afforded public safety to our community. I also know that there's a need for these other structures that may be needed. And if demolishing is the right option, you know, there are other options for condemned properties, but if it's the right option for that community, that's something we want to work with you on.
So the discussion sort of comes back to criteria and definition and how to define imminent danger. I'd love to know how the department, and you don't have to go into all that here and now, but it would be wonderful if you could send out a clear glossary of definitions as to what drives imminent danger. You know, while the previous director was in charge of the department, there were any number of buildings throughout the council district that were blue, signed, and labeled as condemned for any number of reasons. And none of those have come down. But I understand that if the structure at least appears to be intact and it does have some perhaps structural issues and those kinds of things, that that would not be prioritized. But when a building is clearly burned and there's, you know, nothing there but half the first floor and some rubble, it just seems to me that that is just part of the process would need to be cleared away and that lot secured. Now, is there a possibility that we could do those as clean and leans like we do with certain properties, that we actually bill the owner of that property for our coming in and demoing it and leveling the lot?
Yeah, that's a great question. So clean and leans are run through the Department of Public Works. But to your point, as far as it being a nuisance and also, you know, a lot that needs cleaning, I think it's something that collectively we certainly need to look at between our sister departments.
I appreciate. I'm sorry, go ahead.
In regards to your question about, you know, imminent danger versus condemned, condemned really means unfit for human occupancy, so that bar can be as low as not having water service. You know, when we're doing an imminent danger assessment, I think we do want to be more clear about what exactly we're looking for and that's a policy we're certainly working on and we should always be working to improve our policies. What we're doing is we're looking at all angles of the structure and determining, you know, what is actually happening with this right wall, this left wall, the front of the building and is there a public right-of-way or an adjacent structure that will be harmed? Is it occupied or non-occupied? So there are these checklist of items that allow us to determine the severity of the imminent danger.
And what about in terms of the possibility? You know, I saw Wendy Kobe on and I'm not gonna call her out by any means in this discussion, but maybe that's a discussion for the law department if there is a way that we can go in and clear these and bill the owners for the cost of having done it. So I appreciate, I have pictures I'm gonna send over to you. And when she called yesterday, she said she was in the process of writing a letter. And so when I receive her letter, I'm gonna, I will send that over to you with the pictures and continue to advocate to get this property cleared. Thanks, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strausberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sarah, I wanna, I wanna offer my wholehearted support for your, for the nomination for you to be Director. I agree with what Councilman Coghill said, you're credibly responsive. You always help me to understand the process, which can be very complex in some cases. And I think that is what I want to focus my comments on is I agree that the department has made major strides over the last six years or so. And now, it's my opinion that your task is to take it to the next level in a couple of different ways, but particularly when it comes to helping to streamline and helping to communicate to those, especially, I think there are probably a lot of different ways that this could, a lot of different types of people can benefit, but I hear mostly from people who are trying to develop a certain project or trying to make a minor, minor, is it sort of a minor kind of project like a fence or a garage? And, you know, whether they are, they have been doing business with the city for decades but are coming up against newly enforced rules and laws that haven't been enforced in the past, or they're contending with a new type of process like One Stop PGH. I think there's a real opportunity to be proactive about communicating with some of these entities, some of these businesses and development companies to ensure that they, and just, you know, contractors to ensure that they understand the process. And to the extent that's needed at first, especially helping to handhold people through the process, so it's not just, here's what PLI is gonna do, we're gonna tell you the very next step, but we're not gonna tell you the 12 steps after that that might have to do with zoning or planning or this or that, because I think that's where the frustration comes out is they told the very next step, but they don't have a picture or roadmap of where they need to go from there. That's the feedback that I've been hearing. And I would love to have a conversation with you whenever you're ready to brainstorm some ideas for that. I know that you are, you know, obviously going to be staffing up a little bit more. City Council snatched away one of your best employees, thanks to Councilman Wilson, but and that will assist that process too. But I think there are some opportunities for even conversations in small group settings with different types of people who do business with the city to get some sort of small group feedback or workshop type of feedback. So if there's any way that I can help with that, I'd be happy to, but you know, look forward to working with you and look forward to brainstorming some of these ideas for better communication to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Madam President followed by Councilman Wilson.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for chairing. Director, I'm looking forward to working with you as well. I think everybody has a sigh of relief, your appointment, but I do want to address, and I don't know if it's already been addressed, I apologize, so just tell me if it hasn't, we won't have to go over it again. But we did have speakers talking about some of the concerns they have with permits. I definitely have a lot of concerns with the demo and, I mean, when you talk about identifying properties that are in danger, I mean, a good portion of Sheridan, when I was first elected, about 400 properties were vacant and inherited a real mess in terms of the property there. And a lot of that was because of the housing or mortgage foreclosure crisis. And then a lot of other things happened. People started moving out because crimes started going up, all things, kind of things happened. But it left a lot of vacant properties in the area. And a lot of those properties today are still sitting, even though we've had some success in getting some demoed. It's a challenge. If you get a few demoed, you know, in a year across 17 neighborhoods which I represent, it doesn't make a dent in anything. And so I wonder if you're talking about doing any kind of green demos? I want to, I'm wondering if you're talking about working with the URA. My thought has always been when I see the city and we talk about people that are good in terms of housing, Kim in my office is absolutely one of the best. She understands this whole thing and was actually offered a job on the state level. So she, I know she knows what she's talking about when it comes to this stuff. But I really think that we're missing somebody who coordinates all these efforts for the city between the URA, the land bank, the property reserve, the Housing Opportunity Fund, the URA, all the different things that we're trying, and of course, PLI and city planning. I think that there should be somebody who coordinates all that and I would think it would be somebody in city planning who did it, but I don't see that happening. And I'm just wondering what you think you can do in terms of making sure that you're doing, putting some, doing some things different in terms of permits, doing something different in terms of demo and making sure that there's more of a collaborative effort. I do want to say that to Councilman Kraus's questions and comments about the clean sweeps and doing the clean and leans, I did work with Chief of Staff Gilman and we did put in a clean sweep program, which is my understanding they're getting ready to move into one of the divisions, so that should be starting soon. So we will be able to do clean sweep, clean and leans very soon. So that I think will help and it always did help a little bit, but it still doesn't remove the problem. There's still a vacant house that needs cut frequently, still using city resources, you know, repeatedly. And it's, it's just to me, it's a whole department that just needs revamped and rethought of. And I don't mean in terms of making things available online, that's great, but if you, if our residents are living next to a property that is overgrown, that is falling down, that has animals and rodents and high grass, I mean, none of us would want to live next to it and I don't think it's fair for our residents to live next to it. So I want to know what your thoughts are in terms of changing some of those things, more collaborative efforts, and what are you going to do differently to address the concerns that we have in that department?
Sure. Thanks for the question.
But there's a lot to be done.
Yeah, absolutely. And you're hitting on a really key pain point. So on May 11th, just last month, we finally integrated our code enforcement operations team into our One Stop PGH system. So this is the first time that we're able to look at a parcel and see all the permits, licenses, and code enforcement actions, and now the actions of our sister departments, DCP and Jomi on one parcel. So that's helpful on a data front. And now it's what we do with that data. So I think you're absolutely right that PLI plays a critical role in providing key data about code enforcement and development happening in the city. And as councilmembers, you know your communities, but having these data sets are important to decide, okay, given these circumstances, these properties are ripe for the land bank or the community thinks that these are ripe for demolition. The Housing Opportunity Trust Fund should maybe focus on these types of properties for acquiring permitting and helping residential homeowners do work. So I think that you're right that there's a missing piece in the connection between all those entities. And I think PLI, you know, our role is certainly a data role, but also assisting in those subsets of properties that are ripe for those different programs that exist out there. I hope to work closely with council as well as the new Community Health and Safety Office targeting demolition dollars and targeting, you know, that type of approach to maybe be the bridge between those entities and what that PLI does. And I think, you know, as far as some of your other comments, they seem to echo Councilwoman Strausberger's comments as well about, you know, really pivoting towards customer service. You know, I'm immensely proud of our technical expertise in our department, our focus on proper certifications, our training, our continuing education, our launch of this portal. But now that we have this really solid foundation, it's time to pivot and start working on our soft skills, our skills, and then building those stronger partnerships between our department and those similar agencies that can help deal with the types of issues that you're talking about in your community. So we're certainly a cornerstone in that process.
So I actually think, I mean, we've had government relations, people to work with us, that liaison, and that was, that was nice, but I actually like having the director talk with councilmembers. I don't like having liaison. I feel like it's just another layer of bureaucracy that prevents us from getting to things done for constituents. But I would like to see somebody in a position that's coordinating all the housing efforts across the city, including the demo and development, both. I mean, they go definitely hand in hand because there's a lot that we could be doing together differently, some of the things and opportunities available and some of the wishes of the public and the community. And I do think that that would be something that should be housed in the mayor's office to be honest with you, because I think that there's, there's a lot of people working on these issues, but I just feel like there's just such a disconnect and every time I turn around, I want to talk to somebody about something, I'm thinking, okay, well, that's in that department, no, that's in this department. There would be, it'd be great to have that one person. And I think it would make your job easier too, because then you would know what your, some plan that you have to work off of. But I do like to, I would also like to see us do more green demo. But I do want to talk to you about, I did, we did hear from, I heard from some architects and people in the business, developers and others, who said that they really had a lot of respect for you and think that you're going to do a great job, but they were a little bit, I don't want to say disappointed, but I think maybe surprised that you didn't have a background in the industry. Could you talk a little bit about that and how we can reassure, but I think they're mostly concerned about is that they've had for a couple of years now, a lot of problems with the permits. And they just literally sent me another message about permits. And so I think it's this, it's a long wait that people have for permits, waiting for inspections, waiting for all those things, and constantly being charged additional fees. So I think they're feeling, you know, a little bit disgruntled, a little bit, and I think that they want to know that somebody will sympathize or at least understand, you know, what their, what their challenges are. Could you talk a little bit about that and how you're gonna make them, work with them and give them a little bit of comfort in knowing that you understand the industry very well?
Sure, absolutely. I appreciate the question. Again, I think we have focused on the last few years on building up operational requirements and now this pivot towards customer service is going to be of value to them. My background is in public administration and part of my work is to bridge the gap between our technical requirements and expertise and customer service element so that we have a streamlined process. I think a lot of the bumps that folks are experiencing in our process have to do with our connections to similar agencies, right? So we're not gonna issue a permit if, you know, the zoning department hasn't done their review and said, hey, this is okay to go as well. So there's a lot of connections there and I think us being more clear about those connections will be helpful. I've heard a lot of feedback from the industry, the Building Association especially, and our trade license holders about the changes that we've made. I think that there is a lot of support for changes, make sure that they're playing field. But to your point, there's some frustration with the process has changed, how do I navigate this? So that's what we want to help people out with and I think that's a strength of my expertise and my background in public administration. And I think also having a background in civil rights is helpful here. We want to make sure that our process is fair internally. We want to make sure that we are treating applications the same as they come in and that there's transparency and equal treatment to our applications. And, you know, on a, on an equity front, you know, our critical role of data, again, is incredibly important here. I think that if we look at our PLI data, you'll see that, you know, we are meeting our service level agreements as far as getting our reviews in, in a timely manner, in taking applications, but it's that customer service piece that we need to bolster and work on. so that there's a comfort level with the process, the next steps, and people have an understanding of what to expect when going through our process, especially since there's been a lot of changes in the last year as we've stood up the one-stop PGH system. And we have some more changes to go. We have departments that are coming on board. Ultimately, it's for streamlining the process and making it easier, but they're sort of on the road with us, you know, hitting some bumps as we get through.
Okay. I want to thank you, thank you. And I'm looking forward to working with you. And I really would like for you to take a tour with me in Sheridan and some of the areas in my district that are really affected by the need for demo and just the abundance of vacant properties in that area. I would like to just see what, and the challenges, I mean, when people turn things in, they're like, I've turned it in, I've been turning it for 10 years. I mean, it's good, I can't imagine, I mean, it's so disheartening. I mean, honestly, we had one not too far by us, and my husband went and just cut it down. But there are a lot of people that just can't do that. And since then, the property's been cleaned up and things have happened positive. But that's not the case in most of our neighborhoods. It's not the case, and there's not always that person who can go do that, you know, cut a property down, which is why, one of the reasons I approached Chief of Staff Gilman about the clean sweep program, and I can't wait for that to be up and running. Hope that you'll work hand in hand with them as well. I'm looking forward to working with you and good luck on everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Hi, Director Kenter. Nice to see you today. Thanks for coming. And just wanted to say that I really appreciated our relationship so far. You're very responsive, and I think that's going to go a long way for all of us. So I just had a few questions. One is based around compliance. So I know you're, we have had a conversation about this, and you're aware of this property in my district. And, you know, I think it fits into the compliance question that I have because, you know, they, they're a business in my district that's been paying thousands of dollars for a fire wash. And there's been, it put under this by public safety. And, you know, basically, there was some discovery for the owner that they weren't in compliance and they would have, they didn't have, you know, the proper occupancy. And, you know, basically, my question is, like, what's your strategy for making sure a business, which this business has to pay around 1,300 hours a week to try and come, not even to commit compliance, just because they were caught without a sprinkler system? You know, how do we prevent these businesses from, like, shutting down but also getting into compliance?
Yeah, that's a, thanks for the question. I think that's a really tough one. If I recall correctly, there were some changes that were being made to the property that triggered the need for a permit. And that need for the permit meant that there was going to be review of the occupancy and the use of that building, which then triggered the fire safety requirements. I believe they were, you know, running some pretty heavy machinery in there as well, which, you know, then triggered these requirements. So unfortunately, there's no way around those requirements. When a fire suppression system is needed, as, you know, our department, again, our key is public safety. It's needed to ensure that, you know, there's proper fire suppression, there's proper fire alarms, there's proper means of egress so that, you know, there's safety for that building. So we, I understand the frustration, especially the cost that's associated with upgrading a building to become code compliant, but it's enhancing the safety of the workers that are working there, of, you know, people who are customers to that business. So it's an important investment into the building to ensure that they meet that compliance. On our sort of piece here, I think goes back to what Councilwoman Kail Smith had mentioned, which is, and Councilwoman Strasburger, about better customer service so that there's an expectation of that need. I don't think that someone who started, you know, a building permit maybe for something that seemed minor at the time would have known that it would have triggered all these other additional requirements. And that's where it was, you know, a sort of, you know, a moment where I think the owner thought, oh geez, I wasn't sure that that's what that would trigger. So upfront, I think having more information is important for us on a customer service basis. Very often we say, you know, what does your architect or engineer say about this? But very often, they're starting with a minor permit where maybe they're just working directly with a contractor. So that's, it's, I think, a customer service pain point that we can work on.
Yeah, I definitely pulled out one that definitely has a lot of issues to work through. I would just kind of, you know, also just trying to broaden it and just saying how there's a lot of businesses that are, you know, structures that may not have the right occupancy. And, you know, just the general, like, what would be, you know, is there some sort of roadmap that we could provide them, or is there some sort of toolkit or work with the Chamber of Commerce? I'm just trying to understand, like, is there really a direction that we could be, you know, not so heavy-handed but also be very helpful to them?
So I think that, you know, your comments regarding the Chamber of Commerce might be a way to go. I'd be happy to work with council on creating a better roadmap for that. You know, that is something that, you know, we struggle in with our technical expertise. We're very much in the weeds in the translation of those needs on a customer service basis. And it needs to be filtered, I think, a little bit better so that people have a better understanding of what's required and aren't sort of weighed down by the nitty-gritty that we often get into when we get into these discussions.
Okay. So I wasn't, I wasn't here whenever the last director was here, but, you know, you had the opportunity to work with the last director. And, you know, could you tell us, are there other things that you would do differently? And are there legacy projects that you would, that you would keep or initiatives that were started that you would continue?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for the question. So our former director, Maura Kennedy, was really instrumental in putting together the one-stop PGH system. And certainly, that is a system to keep, to support, and to grow over the upcoming years. That system has allowed us to operate during the pandemic. So the ability to have that online permitting, licensing, and now code enforcement in an internal system allowed us to continue operations remotely and through work from home. And I'm immensely proud of our staff for being so nimble during that time. You know, there was a lot of changes coming very soon, and we were up and running within a week because we had that capability to have that online system. So her work absolutely instrumental in supporting that. And, you know, she was also someone who ushered in a lot of these technical hard skills that we need to continue. Our continuing education requirements are very strong and very important. So we ensure that we are the experts regarding building safety and building construction in the city of Pittsburgh. And that's also something for us to be very, very proud of. Again, we've taken a lot of time to build that very strong foundation. And now that we have that, building upon that with our soft skills and customer service and, you know, our connections with our counterpart agencies are sort of the next steps there. So there was a lot of really wonderful work done during that time.
Okay. I wanted to also visit the demolition conversation. I know this, a lot of us are concerned about that. And, you know, basically, a lot of it does come down to funding and having that resource there so we can do what's necessary. So I definitely get that. And just, but just to speak to the point about the technical reasons for demo and which ones are at the top of the list, the bottom of the list, you know, I hear the conversation of how it's, you know, there's a big difference between condemned and imminent danger or emergency demo. And, you know, what I was really interested in moving forward is some sort of real concrete value that we could give to structures, just like, just like the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure does with streets. You know, years past, in the past year, they, I'm sorry, I think maybe it was five years ago, they had went around and scored all the streets with a truck that was equipped with different sensors and everything. And that's not the end-all, be-all, but that's something that they present, they present the streets that had the lowest values, I think lowest or highest, whatever, whatever the scale is made up of. And they're able to have some value next to the streets that they would like to see repaved. I would very, I would be interested to see something like that, you know, whenever demo, whenever the season for demo comes along, that we're presented with some sort of value alongside of, you know, maybe here's an area where, you know, there's a landslide front area, we have, you know, these are high, you know, high-value structures or, is that something like that interest you?
Yeah, absolutely. I think you make a good point. I think we have internal metrics, but I'm not sure we've been great about sharing those metrics to say, hey, this structure is XYZ and it's next to a public right of way. It's next to a school or, you know, so, you know, that's helping us to make our determinations. So certainly something we can work with council on.
Yeah, I really appreciate that, the transparency that Domi has with that. And, you know, that's not the end-all, be-all, but that is a great starting point. So I would like to work with you on that. All right. Well, thanks for your time. And thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members for first round?
Ms. Manuel Bell.
Gross?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Kenter, for being here. I want to echo what the other members have said, and I've really appreciated how available you are. But I also want to add that I've also enjoyed the fact that you're also really, when you're in conversation with members, willing and able to engage in these policy complexities as you have in today's interviews. I think that the public can see that now for themselves, right? That you are willing and able to hear what we're seeing on the ground, what our constituents are saying, what other complexities of the multiple layers of bureaucracy, and willing to kind of just work our way through it. I often use a metaphor for people that it's almost like there's a giant tangled ball of yarn, and we are just pulling out one thread at a time until we finally kind of get at the part where we can have a straight piece of string. It takes time, it's difficult work, and you have to be, like, willing and able to, like, mentally and emotionally engage in it. So thank you for that. I also want to remind, some members have heard me say this multiple times, but some members are new, and there's certainly members of the public. I always bring up the point with PLI that we have had such an explosive growth of activity. So I asked this question of your predecessor in 2014, in her interview, I said, it was 2014, I said, now let's look back five years and let's just talk about how, what is the increase in each of these types of applications? You know, big construction projects, there's such an increase, even, you know, housing rehabs and small business licenses and all of these kinds of, like, can you just frame for us this kind of increased activity? And her answer was, there's absolutely no, there's no way to answer that question. Because PLI was just kind of a hoarder's episode of paper. We walked in there, which I did after that interview, there was just kind of paper piled up to the ceiling. And so the online permitting is a huge leap forward for people trying to get through the process and for processing a lot more responsibly. But also, as you've mentioned several times here, you have data. And so then I would kind of each your answer, ask that question in the budget hearings, which happen at the end of the years. But if you kind of have anything off the top of your head, at one point, I remember it being a five-fold increase, right? So again, just for the public, you know, back, let's say, 10 years ago, maybe a little more, 11 or 12 years ago, there was basically nothing being built in the city except for, like, one or two URA projects. There was no private construction. And now, I mean, all you, you drive around my part of town, and all you see are cranes up everywhere, right? And that's been going on for several years. And you see more, every time you open the paper, it seems like another project's being, you know, featured in the north side or the south side or in other parts of town. So if you could just give us a frame of those huge numbers?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. So yes, there's been a five-fold increase of construction within the city of Pittsburgh. And we've really had to ramp up our operations to be responsive to that. And we're seeing it both in the residential and the commercial. So, and I do have to say that during the pandemic, there was a lot of applications for residential. We saw an increase for that as people are in their homes, they seem to be also looking to replace their windows, fix their doors at a study. So those types of permits not only increased then in that last five-year period that Councilwoman Gross is referencing, but I think we can see those continuing to stay steady. So we issued about 11,000 permits last year in 2019. In 2014, when you had originally asked those questions, the numbers, I believe, are around 6,000 to 7,000 permits. So there's been an increase in that period of time. I think this year, due to the pandemic, at the end of the year, when I'm before you at council table for the budget, we're going to see a little bit of a decrease, but I do think that it'll pick back up. Our construction season is ongoing right now and it's pretty hot. Our inspectors are receiving tons of requests for inspections. So even if our permit volume has gone down a little bit, our need to inspect on permits that were previously issued, that's going up. So it's been an immense volume on the permitting side. And in addition, we've seen our value of construction explode into the billions of dollars.
Right, so that, I think, frames for us. It's like if we had a chart, like, it would be like this, of like, the permits, applications, right? But your staffing has basically not increased at all, if I, the last time I remember, a budget discussion. Now, there's been dollar investments, the budget has gone up because of the technology investments. And I bring this up because I'm usually a skeptic on technology investments, not because I don't have experience in technology, but because I do. So I have a background in, you know, early programming and my, you know, family members who do these kinds of total, you know, purchasing, inventory, accounting, software packages that we have kind of moved more towards at the city. And you'll often hear me say, just because there are bells and whistles, doesn't mean you're going to use them or you should pay for them. But I think this is a case where I've actually, we can see the value, right? Knowing what is happening is huge, that you've entered the data not only ongoing but also you went backwards into those paper records, right? And so like, as you've said, like, that was a big undertaking to go retrospectively through those piles of papers and all those records and get them pinpointed to parcel numbers. So, you know, thank you for that. And I also just want to reiterate that we talked, I think, talking through the different districts, we talked about the different kinds of buckets of activity that PLI does, right? From demolitions and working on inspections of residential properties, single-family type neighborhoods, and new permitting in those single-family type neighborhoods as well, the huge construction projects that you all have, the same skill set is in the same department for doing a new hospital or a new office tower. And is also kind of doing the occupancy permits and inspections, right? And so I want to touch on something that I think Councilman Wilson did is that in District Seven, we have historic neighborhoods, and we have those historic trolley car main streets with their tiny street-facing business fronts. But we probably also have the, I probably have the highest active number of small businesses. And you and I have talked about this in my office before, but I want to kind of point out to council members that, you know, you might have a street now that has those empty main street storefronts, but when they go to be occupied, it's important for equity issues that we do the kind of hand-holding and helping that other members have suggested here. What I've seen in the large development and in the large businesses that have moved in, you know, companies moving in and hiring, you know, 300 people in companies moving in and hiring, you know, 300 people in a month, right? Building their new office building in six months and throwing 300 new people into it. If they've got attorneys, engineers, architects in, you know, in, by the handful. And when you're trying to open your, you know, bakery, or when you're trying to open your retail store, where you're trying to open your cheese shop, you don't have any of those people. And so, but it's important to the city and our neighborhood livability for our constituents to not just have an office building nearby, but that they have, as I always say, you know, you've got to have a drugstore, a daycare and a dentist to have a livable neighborhood, especially if you don't own a car, if you've got kids in the house. So I want to make sure that we're being equitable in how we deal with all of the buckets that PLI has to deal with. And again, for my help, I know none of those things are obvious to do and they are these balls of string that we try to untangle so that we can change. And, and to frame it for the public again, 15 years ago, there weren't dozens and dozens of people trying to open bakeries and drugstores and daycares. And we, we are really having to ramp back up from those austerity years where businesses were just closing and not dozens of businesses trying to open. So we're, we're standing ready to help and, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we'll now move on to second round with Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. I know that we've been talking for about 50 minutes now, so I don't want to belabor this too much, but I did want to just add in. As Councilwoman Wilson was talking about sort of a heavy handedness feel with business owners and with Councilwoman Gross mentioning equity, one thing that my mind jumped to was, this is a bigger picture issue that I think is going to involve multiple departments in a, in a broader discussion, but my concern over a couple of different things that are related. One is, as we talk more generally about, you know, needing to end the idea of broken windows policing, I think the same goes for code violations, you know? How do we balance the need to make sure that communities are as livable as possible? That people who have the means to do so are fixing their sidewalks and are cutting their grass and are keeping their buildings in a certain state of repair, while at the same time not being so reactive and punitive that it could, it puts someone on the path towards being in trouble with the law or being in front of a judge or having a penalty issued against them. I get that this is going to have to be a conversation with magisterial district judges and with the courts and probably also a conversation, you know, with other departments and with the mayor's office. But that's one concern that has crossed my mind more recently. In addition to one that's been brought to my attention by others, which is that as neighborhoods start to change, as neighborhoods start to gentrify, the idea that people, homeowners, long-term homeowners are being targeted by those who want to zap them with a PLI violation in an interest, in a sort of a bullying interest to be able to get them to through, you know, death through paper cuts, be able to then eventually acquire their property and they're being targeted. And I don't think there are any easy answers. I certainly don't want to put you on the spot to answer or to solve this today. I just wanted to let you and others here in the public know that's something I'm thinking about. And Director Kinter, if you have thoughts, I'm, I'm open to hearing them right now, but wanted to just plant that seed as something I'd be interested in further discussing.
You're here. I'm just going to jump in, I'm sorry, and say like, thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger for saying that, that happens in my district as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's, you know, obviously disturbing for us. We are, our, our role is to take complaints as they come in. So we're not looking at how they originated. So it's a bigger question, I think, to your point that should include some other players as well. But it's an important equity question and, you know, hope to work with the mayor's office to address those types of issues.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that I, I mentioned about the permits and the fees and them being so costly. I just want to point out that that's something the council should be looking at when we accept and vote on the permits, the fee schedules. And so I just think that we, that's something that we have to have a talk about, but I think we also make sure that we have a voice in that when we vote. But I do want to also acknowledge that I think that there's a lot of questions being asked. And I think a lot of that comes from people wanting to know, and I think legitimate reasons. But I also think that I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, I think that as a woman in this industry, you're going to have people challenging and questioning you. As I felt happened a lot with the previous director, more so than, than your male counterparts sometimes. And I just want you to know that the Women's Caucus is here and we'd love to work with you and help you if you ever come across any issues that, that we can help you with. But I, we know your ability and your capability and it's been very amazing working with you. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Any further comments from members?
Yep. I have my hand up.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I missed it. Councilman.
Yeah, for second round, but you haven't had first round, have you?
No, we completed first, we're on second.
Yeah, but you hadn't have first round, had you?
Go ahead.
For sure?
Okay. So, Sarah, I'd like to revisit this idea of code enforcement and lay a little bit of a groundwork or foundation for you. Council, of course, is elected by democratic process. We come, we sit collectively and set a standard for the city, if you will, in a collective and democratic process. And then councils turn those standards over to administrations for implementation and enforcement. And I don't think there is a member of council that has not experienced some heightened level of frustration with enforcement across the board, not just in PLI. But since we're talking about PLI today, I'll focus on that. But frustration with enforcement being a complaint driven process and not a well managed, thoughtful review process that takes place on a regular basis. While we were talking and why this came to me, I got a text from a constituent about a property. Again, up in Allentown that is owned by probably the poster child of the worst property owner this city has ever seen. He's had apartments in Carrick while Councilwoman Brudiak was on the council that were utterly deplorable properties throughout the south side, back in the hollow, 1500 Bingham Street, a church in Arlington. And has been cited and in court. I have lost count of the number of times this property owner has been before judges. We've gone, we have appeared. He clearly knows how to work the system. He knows how to play it and get through it to his advantage. So just about a week or two ago, I got calls that people were living again in one of his properties. In Arlington, there's, it is not permissible. It's been through the courts, I can't tell you how many times. I called our inspector, our inspector was wonderful. He was up there immediately, informed the tenants that somehow they'd been taken advantage of. Whatever this property owner told them, they cannot be in there and cannot be living in that building. So low and behold, 10 days later, I get a text from a constituent, people living in the building again. And what I get is what am I doing about it? And when systems after system after system after system fails, you know what rolls downhill. It ends up in our lap and our constituents want to know why we are not doing something about it when we are. But what we're doing is fist fighting in the dark. Trying to accomplish what they by right as residents and citizens of the city have. You know, we set the standard and we turn it over to be implemented and enforced. And far too often, it just isn't happening. So it brings the conversation around equity. And I've heard that mentioned a number of times. And, you know, and I'm certainly not looking to play anyone against anyone, so please don't take it that way. But there are sections of the city and streets on, in the city where burned out shells of houses would not sit for two years. And there would not be problems with squatters and properties that clearly have been through the courts, I don't know how many times, and still becoming problematic. So help.
Yeah, absolutely. I hear you loud and clear on that. It's certainly frustrating for us as well and our inspectors who are called out for a citation process, get to the courts. And maybe there's lack of service or maybe something happens where it is dismissed. One thing that is new that we're doing that we've been pretty successful at getting a resolution on is posting when the court date is. So that concerned citizens can join us. Councilwoman Teresa Cale Smith had recently had one of her staff members reach out and we had some members of the public attend a court date and that has been, that has done wonders to support PLI in our violation work. Those violations, we get to that third notice, we're going to court and then we're at the mercy of the courts. There, when a constituent is there and they say, please do not continue this case, please, let's get a resolution. It matters and it helps. So one thing that is, you might have noticed that our code enforcement data is down right now in Building Eye because we've just adopted this new system. When it's live again, we will be posting those court dates into Building Eye so that residents can know when the court date is. And they can attend with us to advocate as well. Absolutely. And you're right, if we were to overlay our code enforcement data over a map of the city of Pittsburgh, I think we would see inconsistencies on number of calls and, you know, the types of enforcement actions that are actually complete.
So community leaders do attend. I often attend. Staff from my office attends, we petition the court and we find failure after failure. It doesn't, it doesn't appear to be helping. And so I, perhaps the challenge is, how can we better communicate with the courts how very important these issues are to, to us and the constituency and the people that we represent and serve? I'm certainly not, I'm, I'm not having the success I wish I was having alone. And perhaps it is the city in its entirety, our, our mayor, administration, council at large, to begin diligently and holistically and repeatedly petitioning the courts for, for support and, and equity in, in these cases. Because it's, it has not been my experience to date. Not all the time, but unfortunately more than the majority of the time.
Sure. And I would be happy to join you in that.
Thank, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further members for a second round?
Seeing none, just one thought along the demolition conversation. Some years ago, I started looking into the potential to, as opposed to demolition, look at stabilization efforts. Sometimes there are properties that are not in need of demolition, but they need a dormer fixed. Or they need something along those lines stabilized so that we can eventually get them back onto the, onto the tax rolls. Fortunately, at the time I was looking to utilize CDBG dollars. The challenge legally I discovered there was we couldn't guarantee the end user. And if you couldn't guarantee end user was eligible for CDB, a CDB, CDB dollar eligible user, then you may run into a legal problem trying to utilize those dollars for stabilization. Plus there was the issue of going onto private property to be able to stabilize. So this is all to say, I don't necessarily have an answer, but it's something I'd probably like to discuss with you at some point in time. I think now with the land bank, now with the Housing Opportunity Fund and the URA, there may be some sort of tri-cooperation agreement, I don't know what that is, that allows us to begin looking at this a little differently to begin to go on to private property, begin stabilizing, knowing that we actually do now have an end user in mind via the land bank or via the URA. So that's just something I want to put out there. You can respond, you don't have to, but it is an interest of mine.
Thank you, Councilman. I would like to talk to you about that further.
Thank you. Seeing no further speakers, at this point, we will end. Ms. Kinter, thank you. Your nomination will come up for vote next Wednesday, I believe. And final vote the following Tuesday. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now transition to our regular standing committee meeting. Our, and our first order of business is public comment. We have a number of people who I believe have been waiting for an hour now to provide public comment. When you do, please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first commenter is Ron Sobol. Is Mr. Sobol on the line?
Hi, Councilman. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. First, I'd like to say that I was very impressed by what all the council people stated in their questioning of Ms. Kinter. And they took it very seriously and they brought up some very complex issues that I had not thought up about demolition and conservatorship, maybe in community funding for demolitions. It was, it was very impressed. But anyway, I'm here to talk about the aspect of her office that handles building permits and construction. That office is still closed to individual people like me. There is no one to talk to, people don't respond to you. They essentially ghost you on, on emails. It takes weeks to get any type of response. And then when you do get a response, the emails I get, in particular from David Green, are impossible for anyone to get any meaning out of. Typically, they contradict each other, the emails don't make sense. And all of these things could be resolved in a 10 minute phone call. But he does, he in particular, I'm not sure if that's the policy of Ms. Kinter's office, is not to talk to the citizens. And that is really holding back the city and doing a disservice for the residents in Pittsburgh that there is no one really to talk to. There's no ombudsman, their say is final and you can't really understand what is motivating their decision. I'm not saying that it's not justified, but it's very hard for an architect, a lawyer or a citizen to understand where that office is going for. And I agree that with everyone here that Sarah seems excellent. I was very impressed. And I believe that she also wants the office to do a lot better. And the website that she talked about throughout today was, is very impressive and it helps licensing a lot, but it doesn't do a lot for construction permits. It gives you information, but it doesn't give you direction. And there is no one to answer any questions for people at a reasonable time. There is no help from her staff. And again, as I said earlier, this is a culture there. And what she really needs to work on is changing that culture. And she did mention that, and I was, I was very happy to hear that. That she wants to change the status quo in that office, that she wants to make sure that people feel that they're accountable. And Sarah needs your help to succeed too. She needs a mandate to shorten these review times. She needs a mandate to try and offload some of the excess work in third party inspections to, well, inspections to go to third party agencies. And not just try and handle this massive load that's brought on by new development in Pittsburgh. Many other major cities have already started doing that. Pittsburgh is falling behind in that aspect. And that would really help boost Sarah's office's efficiency. And she needs something that makes people feel that they're heard in that office too. Responding to emails in a timely manner, allowing your constituents to talk to her office people directly. Even with COVID, even, well, even without COVID, there's just no one really to talk to. And hopefully over the next couple of years, I'll see these changes. Because again, Pittsburgh is my home. I'm from North, I'm from North Point Breeze. I've lived here my entire life. And I see the challenges she faces now much clearer than before this, this interview. But if she can just work on the communication aspect, which Councilwoman Strasburger may.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Fred Francis.
Hi, Council, how are you?
Good. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record and your time.
My name's Fred Francis. I live in Beachview, right on the red line. I am calling in today to renew my objections to the agenda item about funding a study through the Densus Group. Just as a reminder, the Densus Group is pushing a provably false narrative about outside agitators. They are employing counterterrorism practices that they are teaching to municipal police departments all over the country to assist with what they call crowd control, but with what is clearly suppression of the right to peaceably assemble. As always, we are opposed to any new programs that increase police department funding by even $1. But especially to this one, which would seem to be actively harmful to not just the civil liberties of Pittsburghers, but to our safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Bill Joyce.
Our next speaker is Bill Joyce. Is Mr. Joyce on the line? I see his name.
Bill Joyce?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I am testifying today in support of the E-Walt House Historic Nomination. I'm an architect with considerable experience with the adaptive use of historic buildings, including several National Register properties. I am a 30-plus-year Lawrenceville resident. Prior to moving to Lawrenceville, I lived in the central north side in Manchester, where, as a young architect, I developed my passion for historic buildings and historic urban neighborhoods. When I walk by the E-Walt House with a casual observer who is seeing it for the first time, they inevitably say, "Hey, that house is different." When I explain that it predates the existing dense rowhouse fabric of the neighborhood and is, in fact, a circa 1840 Greek Revival House that had extensive grounds that originally stretched to the river, they are amazed and want to know more. It gives me the opportunity to talk about the historic Allegheny Arsenal in the semi-rural bucolic era, when these arsenal-style Greek Revival Houses were built and the historic Allegheny Cemetery was established. Saving and reusing the E-Walt House is critical to telling Lawrenceville's story to future generations. The owners of the E-Walt House, the Rupertts, inherited the E-Walt House. They are not city residents and are not interested in issues critical to Lawrenceville. I question a number of statements the Rupertts and representatives have made at various hearings through this process, and would like to briefly comment on a couple of them. The Rupertts state that the roof was damaged in the 2019 microburst, that the roof is failing, and the house is in danger of collapse. I have viewed drone footage of the roof, and other than a few missing shingles, it looks in pretty good shape. My wife and I actually own one of the Lawrenceville buildings damaged by the microburst. A very high decorative chimney crashed through our roof. We ended up tearing off half the roof, replacing the ridge beam, rafters, and some of the floor joints. Demolition never crossed our mind. Mr. Rupert states he is a contractor. If that is the case, my advice is that, if there is some damage, to talk to his insurance company and fix it. As the chairperson of the Planning Commission told the Rupertts, "Condition of the house is the owner's responsibility. The owner is the steward of the house." In addition to the marketability of the E-Walt House that will be discussed by others, I recently became aware of a large residential property on 45th Street that apparently sold for over a million and is presently being gutted and rerooted. So I would challenge any of the comments that the E-Walt House cannot be economically renovated. I would also like to close with a few phrases from...
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jill Joyce.
Hello?
Yes, please.
Yes, I'm Jill Joyce. I'm an architect, long-term resident of Lawrenceville. I have my practice here and I have extensive experience in renovation and indoor preservation. I'm supporting the nomination of the E-Walt House and the Maori House for city historic designation. They're both contributing buildings in the National District Designation that Lawrenceville recently achieved. To mention that George Rupert, the former owner, is not wanting the house nominated. I want to speak to the character of Keith Cochrane, who is the nominator for both houses. I have known Keith the entire time I've been in Lawrenceville, and that's 35 years. He's the most honest and sincere person I know. I believe him when he said he and the late Carol Peterson had conversations with George Rupert about preserving and nominating the house. According to Keith, George was very fond of the house and wanted it preserved. The E-Walt House appears to be in decent condition from the outside. Yes, it needs some work. Woodwork repair, masonry cleaning, repainting, new windows, all of this is doable. I was inside it over a year ago. The interior has a lot of this original, unique interior architectural fabric. The house, we believe, can be economically renovated. The current owners have stated that the house is in imminent danger of collapse. It's so, it's because of their neglect for the last three years. Tom Crew, the contractor I've worked with, looked at the house and said it was in okay condition, and he has worked on a lot worse. Bill Behr, a local real estate developer, in a letter of support stated, "I believe that the E-Walt House renovated, applying thoughtful design and quality construction, would be marketable within the range of high-end homes currently available in the Lawrenceville neighborhood." We strongly agree with this. The E-Walt House, just a few doors up from us, opened a couple years ago for $350,000. It was completely gutted and renovated, and it just sold within 15 hours for well over $625,000. This house did not have the large lot, which were trees, and was not nearly as grand as the E-Walt House. The prospective developers have stated they have no interest in renovating or restoring the house. They want to tear it down, remove all the existing material trees, to make room for five new townhouses that will only benefit them because of the high asking price. A gain of a few is a loss for many. Once the house is gone, it's gone forever. And we hope you will vote in favor of the E-Walt House.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Cochrane.
Good morning, council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Keith Cochrane. I have practiced architecture with a specialty in historic preservation for more than 45 years, unbelievably, and much of that time as a resident of Lawrenceville. On behalf of the Lawrenceville stakeholders, I nominated the E-Walt House at 186 Home Street as a historic structure under the Pittsburgh Preservation Ordinance. At the same time, I consented to and support the historic nomination of the Maori Addison Mansion at 5134 Carnegie Street, which I own together with my wife, Mary Mazziauti. The Historic Review Commission and the Planning Commission have both confirmed the significance of these houses in their votes to recommend city historic designation. I can only add that the significance of both of these structures was documented as early as 1967 in the first major publication of the Pittsburgh History and Landmarks Foundation, Landmark Architecture of Allegheny County, and reaffirmed by the designation in 2019 of the Lawrenceville National Register Historic District, which will provide federal tax incentives for rehabilitation of contributing structures such as the E-Walt and Maori Houses. A brief note regarding the feasibility of preserving the E-Walt House, which is now under threat of demolition. I am aware of multiple interested purchasers for the house as a rehabilitation project. Unfortunately, since the house went on the market in 2019, it was never listed with a licensed real estate agent or available for other agents to show through the multi-list. I know of interested purchasers who were unable to have their calls returned by the owner, unable to have offers considered. I believe the house can be readily sold at fair value if marketed through conventional means. Finally, I want to emphasize that I believe the house is structurally sound and readily marketable for rehabilitation and reuse. I'll close with a brief statement regarding the owner's current opposition to designation of the house as a historic structure. Over the past 30 years, interested Lawrenceville residents, including the late Carol Peterson, a good friend of mine and me, spoke repeatedly with George Rupert, who owned and lived in the house, and his sons Eric and Gerard, regarding the family's desire to see the house preserved. The stakeholders originally moved forward with the nomination in 2018 with this understanding. We were thus surprised to receive a letter of objection to the nomination from Eric Rupert and Eric's wife. We understand that Eric inherited sole ownership of the house from his father. We relied on the Rupertts' assurances in the letter that the house will not be torn down and it will stay a family home, and accordingly withdrew our original nomination. But to our dismay, in the summer of 2019, a developer applied for zoning variances to demolish the house and build five rowhouses on the property. In November, despite the fact that the zoning variances were under appeal, application was filed for a demo permit. It was only then that our stakeholders group sought the protection of the...
Thank you, Mr. Cochrane. I would also ask that Jill Joyce, if she could submit her testimony in writing to the city clerk's office. Most members aren't able to clearly hear her remarks. Our next speaker is Angelique Bamberg.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning. My name is Angelique Bamberg. I live at 233 Amber Street, Pittsburgh 15206. I am an architectural historian and preservation planner. And in 2017, I was part of the team that prepared the application for the Lawrenceville Historic District to be listed in the National Register of Historic Places. So, I became very intimately familiar with Lawrenceville over the course of about a year and a half, two years, that that project took. My responsibilities were researching and writing the district's history and significance, and I also participated in the block-by-block, building-by-building architectural survey of all three wards of Lawrenceville. We looked at literally everything built in the district to develop the inventory for the historic district between 5,000 and 6,000 properties. As we did that, we identified which properties contributed to the historic character of the district and which didn't. And we were also charged with identifying individual buildings with potential individual historical significance. I personally surveyed the E-Walt House during this effort, and I marked it as both contributing and potentially individually eligible for the National Register, which has criteria very similar to those for city historic designation. And I just want to talk to you briefly about my reasons for that. Primarily, it is one of the most distinctive buildings in Lawrenceville, and this is due to its size, its sighting, its style, its era of construction, and its association with early patterns of development of Lawrenceville. This is one of the very few buildings in Lawrenceville or in the city of Pittsburgh from the pre-Civil War period. These few early buildings we have left are important for what they tell us about the pre-urban period of Lawrenceville's development, when there was a village concentrated around the arsenal, but the riverfront east of there was farmland and not yet industry, and the neighborhood wasn't dense with houses and businesses as it is today. The E-Walt House is also a rare freestanding example of a Greek Revival House in Pittsburgh. All buildings can be expected to age and change, of course, over 100, 150, 170 years, but the E-Walt House has enough integrity that its Greek Revival character is still evident and tells us something about the architectural practices of that time in Pittsburgh's history. The pairing of this nomination with the Maori Addison House is especially meaningful, because they're both Greek Revival Houses in Lawrenceville, but the same, but also different. And so, the designation of each of them expands the historic and architectural context of both of them. The fact that there are two Greek Revival former country houses left in Lawrenceville doesn't make either of them less valuable or expendable. There are different threads of the same story. The story of pre-Civil War Lawrenceville is richer for having both of these important houses preserved in the district. The final thing I would like to say is I would like to confront directly one of the owner's criticisms of this nomination. I understand that they have objected to the designation of the E-Walt House on the grounds that its former owner, Samuel E-Walt, was associated with slavery. And as preservationists and as citizens, we need to be very sensitive about our efforts to preserve artifacts of history that are oppressive or offensive to any members of our community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Axtell.
Thank you. My name is John Axtell. I live in Friendship. I moved to Lawrenceville in 1982. I purchased and restored a house on Main Street in 1985, which I still own. I've been active with Lawrenceville revitalization and preservation efforts continuously for close to 40 years. I urge the city council to concur in the judgment of the Historic Review Commission and Planning Commission that the E-Walt and Maori Houses are worthy of protection under the Pittsburgh Historic Preservation Ordinance. The Preservation Ordinance exists to protect just such landmark structures as the E-Walt and Maori Houses. I and others have been attracted to Lawrenceville and Pittsburgh in no small part because of the authentic and distinctive character of the neighborhood and the city. This character stems as much from our community's heritage of stewardship of good architecture in buildings, big and small, as it does from new construction. We should expect holders of investment properties and commercial developers to abide by these standards in the same way that we expect our neighbors to do so. The fine Greek Revival design of the E-Walt and Maori Houses make them exactly the kind of place-defining buildings that establish the character of a neighborhood like Lawrenceville and a city like Pittsburgh. They will join numerous examples of similar historic houses that have been successfully maintained as economically viable properties in Lawrenceville, including my own house on Main Street. I hope that city council will ensure that the Maori and E-Walt Houses will continue to contribute to a successful future for Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melissa McSwigan.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Melissa McSwigan. I live in Point Breeze. First, I want to say thank you to city council, as I know you all have numerous issues on your plate, and I appreciate all you do for the city. Your dedication really shows, as evidenced by this meeting and what I heard prior to the public comments, as well as what I follow in the news, and I really do mean that sincerely. But I am going to speak more specifically about the E-Walt House, as the others have done. Without the historic designation, this National Historic District House will likely be demolished by the developer to make way for more non-affordable housing in Lawrenceville. The new development would likely obliterate all the unusual trees that shade the green space and make for an unexpected and charming lot among the neighborhood's many rowhouses. And with daily concerns about environmental sustainability, generally, the most green thing we can do is renovate when possible and not demolish. And also, given today's construction, any new development put on the site will not have the lifespan of this existing pre-Civil War house. I do appreciate that there is a genuine property rights concern on city council. I too am a city property owner, and I've also lived in a local historic district. The way I see it is that we all live in an interconnected network of neighborhoods, and we have various regulation of land use to ensure our, hopefully, healthy and vibrant communities. This local nomination is part of that, as is zoning permitting and other land use. And I just want to say that designating the E-Walt House as historic would not rob the property owners of their right to sell the building. And additionally, our Historic Preservation Ordinance does provide a financial hardship clause for the property owner. Thus, historic designations help to balance quality of living and neighborhood planning with individual property owner needs. And in closing, I know a lot of claims have been made in previous hearings and probably via emails and some calls. I hope that city council will look into all the issues before making their recommendation. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll take us to our last speaker of the day, Allison Keating.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, no, so I wanted to speak on the secondary employment software that is before you today. I have a lot of questions about secondary employment. I don't know the history of the program for the police department. It seems like the intention is to get more police out, you know, for security reasons at certain locations like bars. And I guess I just, like, I haven't seen any proof that this is actually helpful. You know, bars are paying, like, you know, really high rates. I mean, I know, I go to the Giant Eagle on Cedar Avenue, and there's often been a police officer there, though I think that they've transitioned to a security guard. I don't know the reason for that. And so, I guess my concerns are just, you know, like, does working secondary employment affect the officer's primary jobs? Like, if they're working, like, you know, 10, 20 hours of secondary employment, how, like, how, does that affect their burnout? Does it make them more liable to leave the city where we train them? And then, like, are the officers who take advantage of the secondary employment, are they more likely to go to the suburbs later? And we lose all that training? You know, I, like, I just, I feel like we have not looked into, like, why we have this program. And I also looked at the, it appears in the 2018 budget, I think we actually lost money on providing this program for officers. They, because they take their income, but we are, we take a portion of it to pay for the program. But if we're actually losing money some years on that, that seems to not really be a well-structured program. But, no, I just, I hope that council will inquire more as to why we have this program, what the benefits are. what the benefits are, if there's any pros, cons, all that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith. Ms. Schlossberger.
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Laval Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
You have all nine.
We have all nine, too.
Yeah, yeah, two of you.
That'll take us to our first committee of the day, which is Finance and Law Chair by myself. We have the supplemental paper, Bill 407.
Bill 447, Witness Directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to Place Upon the Qualified Voters of the City at the 2020 November General Election a Referendum Question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article 2 Executive, be amended and supplemented by amendment of the language and adding new language to Section 229 and 230 to expand the powers of the Independent Citizen Police Review Board to allow the Board to carry out its original mandate to investigate police misconduct and improve police-community relations?
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing.
Second. Motion in second. Are those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will be held for cablecast public hearing. That takes us to Bill 407. And can we also read Bill 403? I believe you're a companion.
Bill 407, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the City Controller to Transfer a Total of $25,000 as indicated from and to the following accounts within the 2020 operating budget. Bill 403, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Executive Director of the Citizen Police Review Board to Enter Into an Agreement with the Densus Group to Provide Citizen Police Review Board with a Third-Party Assessment of an Effective Plan to Address Police-Citizen Engagement and Use of Force as it is currently deployed and Providing for Payment of Cost thereof in an Amount Not to Exceed $25,000.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve with discussion, please.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Kels.
Yeah, good morning. Thank you. So, members, last week I asked for a one-week hold on the bill at the request of the Director. Last night, the Citizens Police Review Board met in their monthly board meeting, and the topic of the conversation was this transfer of $25,000 to assist with the third-party assessment. And the Board last night voted five to one in support of the Director's desire to petition the Council for this transfer of funds so that they could enter into a third-party assessment. And so I brought Director Pittenger in this morning, and she's here on our Zoom call. I'd like to turn the conversation over to her for now. I probably have some questions, but I'd like for her to be able to present the argument to Council here to begin with. So Director Pittenger, I know you're here with us, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning, Councilmembers. This involves our independent assessment of the incidents related to protests that were here in the city of Pittsburgh from May 30 through a controversial incident that occurred on June 1. We are interested and we require a professional perspective in a very limited view of what went right, what went wrong, what could we do better? We have conflicting stories in terms of the use of force, the escalation of force. The police reported circumstances that differ from what the community has reported. We can offer conjecture and opinion and subjective interpretation of a lot of the information that we have. But to make the report credible and to offer that information to inform the Board as they prepare their final report, it is appropriate and necessary for us to have that limited, but professional scope of review. The Densus Group, I've heard some criticisms of them. They, this is what they do. They assess the management of protests from the government side, basically. Are rights being protected? Are our police operating as guardians rather than street warriors? How do we assure that when people wish to protest, hold demonstrations to redress government, that it is done in a safe manner so that we're protecting our protesters as well as protecting our police officers? That's the essence of our request. We do not have enough money to do it on our own. So we have sought this transfer of funds to allow us up to the $25,000 to complete this.
So, Director, when the conversation first initiated, I was made aware of some state legislatures that had posted some suggestions as to what we can do at a very difficult time like this to assist and support. And one of them was that we can enrich and empower or form Citizens Police Review Boards. And you see additional legislation introduced by Councilman Burgess yesterday to do that, to assist in that as well. And so I called you to, first of all, check in with you and see how you were faring in a very difficult time, and asked you how I could help. And you came across with this and said, what we really need is funding so that we can assess, again, what was good about what happened, what was not so good about what happened, how to improve police response in terms of policy, practice, and procedure so that both police and protesting are equally protected in terms of expressing their First Amendment right to be in the public space and to protest. Did I sort of convey that accurately, I hope?
Yes, that's accurate, Councilman.
Is there anything else you might want to add at this time? If not, I'm going to turn it over to some members if they wish to engage.
No, that's fine. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I may have further questions later, but for now, I'll relinquish the floor and turn it over to other members who might have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
To it. So, thank you, Director Pittenger, for being here, and thank you, Councilman Kraus, for holding this bill for some time. Just going to recap a little bit, I think, what Councilwoman Kraus said. I got many calls the morning, Tuesday, June 2, about the events of the evening before. Again, which is kind of that stretch of Center Avenue. The City Council boundaries go right down the center line of the street. So half of the street is District 7, and the other half of the street is District 8. I saw a lot of video footage from constituents. I saw a lot of video footage from media. And I made a public statement that it looked to me that the only video footage we could see looked like the police were acting in an unprovoked, were not provoked, and used force and chemical weapons in their arsenal upon peaceful protesters. And if there was other footage that existed that showed that provocation or events preceding the use of force, it wasn't available publicly. And I thought the public and certainly the CPRP needed to be able to see that footage. Director Pittenger, do you have further footage or radio communications?
We have information that does fill some of that information gap.
What form is the information in?
We have video, and we have transcripts. The detail and further inquiry into and access to evidence, we are hoping to include that review with our professional consultants. I have been assured that that material will be made available to us.
So there are two bills in front of us, one that transfers you the funds. Now, I know that you and I talked on Tuesday, June 2, around noon or so, and you had not received any, not a single complaint or report from the public.
That's correct. And upon your posting, yes.
And then, after posting that evening about it on Facebook and calling on the public, too, and we're laughing amongst us because some 30,000 people looked at that Facebook post and shared it 400 times. And then, how many reports do you have now from citizens?
Oh, we have 40 plus.
Okay, so good. I'm glad to hear that, because the more information, the better. Certainly, I'm sure there are different camera angles and different time, you know, segments of the time, chronology and all that, those kinds of things. So I am happy for you to get more resources to adequately investigate this incident. I am not so happy about what I see and hear about the companion bill, which is the no-bid contract to the Densus Group. I need to hear better why they bring investigative power. It doesn't look to me like they do. It looks to me like they've been training to police departments. And that's not the CPRB's task here. So I am not comfortable at all with this choice.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross. Actually, a major part of their work is conducting after-action reports to audit incidents and the conduct of whoever was involved in whatever incident they were auditing. Training is secondary, and for our purposes, we are not looking for any training to occur. We are looking for that forensic review of the dynamics that were in play during those incidents that raise concern, in particular, the June 1 incident. They have the professional expertise that we do not. They also have a much broader philosophy in terms of the use of force or any purpose. They do promote less restrictive, less intrusive, less harmful interactions. They tend to be preventative as opposed to reactive policing. They have proven themselves over the years to me as being professional resource that if I have questions, they have been very generous with their time and their willingness to assist me to understand certain police tactics, the continuum that may be deployed in certain instances, which would be totally inappropriate in another instance. They have a non-biased local view. They also have a global view in terms of best practices that are utilized by police units throughout the world, where they do, in fact, do some training at the request of the State Department. They've demonstrated a unique approach that is different from your traditional people, entities like Blackwater, people that tend to do this kind of training that is a little bit harder in the use of force emphasis than what the Densus Group promotes. They have a different philosophy, and it was consistent and compatible with what we believed was evolving to be best practices. We want to assure that if we are not engaging in best practices, that we understand where those deficiencies may be. I am not a professional law enforcement person. I have no business saying the officer did this or the officer did that during those incidents, and it was appropriate or it was a best practice. That's why we want to inform our final report with a professional expertise that Densus brings and that we have confidence in. I've heard criticisms that they promote an intruder, intruder theory. There is no question that there are people who will take protest, lawful assembly, lawful protest. They will use it as cover. They will then disengage from the legitimate protest and proceed to engage in activity that is destructive and that diminishes the original purpose of the protest. They use it as a cover.
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt, Director. I don't see any of the complaints from citizens saying that the CPRB's job here is determine whether they are outside agitators or inside agitators regarding the events of June 1.
Well, that's...
That's actually, it is not apparent to me that that is part of the investigation.
Well, yes, yes.
So maybe you need to speak a little more to that, because I don't understand what is relevant here. So I mean, we've heard in the media, right? Again, as councilmembers, we're basically only getting the same information citizens at home are getting. And we saw that there were some incidents of, you know, burning a vehicle downtown five days earlier, something like that. But what we're talking about, this transfer of funds being to help you with the investigations of June 1 and those citizen complaints. Are you saying that you got a citizen complaint that claimed there was outside agitators? And that you're investigating a citizen complaint?
The Board has directed me to conduct an investigation or inquiry, whichever term you prefer, to all events that transpired from Saturday through and including June 1.
So $25,000 is to investigate Saturday, May 28's events?
It is to investigate from the Saturday through the June 1 incident.
May 30.
May 30, okay. May 30, the 31st, and the incident on the 1st. It was during that period of time where we did have some destructive behavior that was done. We had injuries. I think we're aware of at least nine injuries that occurred to protesters. We know that there were 32 injuries that police officers sustained. Well, 30 of them, total of 32 injuries. It envelops the entire time, because we're talking about the police intervention during that period of time. The individuals who lit the police vehicle on fire, that kind of destruction, and where they broke the windows, where we had property damage, they were not a part of the legitimate protest. They were individuals that intruded on the...
So there's nothing, so I don't want to spend much time there, because my concern is on June 1.
I understand.
I think is not, we are not analyzing the role of outside agitators or not. I don't think you have a citizen complaint, right? And this is the Citizen Police Review Board. And I understand that your mission here is to respond to citizen complaints. I do not believe, from the complaints that I got from citizens, that none of the emails that I got were asking me to investigate outside agitators. And so it's my understanding, when I referred those citizens to the CPRB, they were saying that they, as citizens, were fired upon. They had personal experience being, you know, tear gas firing or being, you know, attacked by the police, right, unprovoked. So that, I am happy to get you more resources to investigate those complaints. If this $25,000 is just going to investigate the weekend assertions of outside agitators, then I'm not supportive, I don't think, right? Because I want to see more resources going to the events of June 1.
And Councilwoman, I can assure you that June 1 is a significant part of the general investigation. Each of those individuals who submitted an individual complaint, they are being investigated individually in their own right. And the resources that we can apply to further understand what transpired in each of those complaints, there certainly, that is part of our purpose here.
I would like you to repeat what you just said for me one more time.
We are looking at the big picture from what transpired. We are not targeting agitators or intruders or anything like that. We're not investigating criminal behavior. We are looking at the overall pattern of police performance and community performance. We are investigating each complaint that we received individually, each individual complaint, particularly from June 1.
Does it sound like you just said that you were investigating each of the individuals
are investigating?
Who submitted a complaint?
We are investigating each individual complaint.
Are you investigating individual citizens?
No.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
We are not investigating individuals. We are investigating each individual complaint that we received in their own right. In addition, we are reviewing, as is the Board's, consistent with the Board's mission, the policies and practices that were applied throughout that three-day period.
I think I understood a little better about the nuance. I do still have concerns about this no bid award to the Densus Group. We've, you know, as council members, had requests for these things before and turned them down when we thought, you know what, there are probably other people in the field. I had a request for a partnership with a nonprofit turned down by this council this year because it was thought to be illegal. And it looks to me like this legislation is awarding this contract to the Densus Group without going to bid, and it, and you've told me there's no one else in the nation with this skill set, but I find that hard to believe. So I'll be supporting the dollar transfer, but not the contract to the Densus Group. And I would encourage you to bid this out. Because it seems to me that what we need to do here is step up to the volume of incident reports and not just go to someone we know who helped nearly, what, fifteen years ago with the G seven protests, which are entirely different situation. I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that part. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I want to echo, I agree with Councilwoman Gross's concerns about the no bid contract. I'm just, I've been pretty consistent when I've been here. The only time I've ever wavered from that is it's been something in terms of public safety, media public safety. But I do want to say that I'm supportive of giving the money to Ms. Pittler and I'm supportive of that. But I just, and I'm going to say too, I think that there's a lot of concern and a lot of conversation, I think, and, and you know this. You know this, that there's a lot of people There's a lot of noise somewhere. I, but anyway, I feel that there's a lot of people that have a lot of concerns, and, and I think that they don't necessarily feel that the CPRB speaks for the public. And, and I think you, and I know you know that, I know you're aware, but I do want to say, I think part of that comes from, you have such an immense knowledge. I mean, you really have a lot of knowledge about the the legalities and the things that you really can do and, and things that people really can be held accountable for in the law and all that. You just have such a knowledge. And I think that's one of the reasons some of my colleagues and I are talking and why you have such trust, because we know that you know. But, but having said that, I, I don't know how you build the trust in people and doing something like a no bid contract to me with a, a company that people have concerns with is not going to do anything in terms of building that trust and making people think that we've done everything right and above board. So I'm not supportive of that, but I am supportive of the initial movement of money.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Councilwoman. Are there comments? Councilman Cockhill? You're on mute, Councilman.
How about now?
Good.
Mrs. Pittinger, thanks for being here, and I really do appreciate the work that you do. But I want to start by saying, you know, I think our police officers did an exemplary job throughout all these protests. I don't know how many there were. They came to me beforehand and said, you know, we would have one minor incident, which I consider minor incident, as to whether it was tear gas or rubber bullets. I would have signed on the dotted line right there because, you know, they're put in tough situations like that. And, you know, sometimes, you know, mistakes are made, and I'm not saying one wasn't made. I did talk to many police officers who were on the scene. Many have said things were thrown at them, you know. Now, whether they put tear gas or rubber bullets on innocent protesters, I'm sure that's the case, but it doesn't mean something wasn't thrown from a distance from them. So I can't be supportive of the transfer money. I can't be supportive of the group. You know, to me, it seems like twenty-five thousand dollars being thrown out the window. I don't think we need this investigation in some tear gas. Police department's done a fantastic job. Can we get rid of this person? Okay, thank you. So, you know, my thoughts are, you know, overall, we did a fantastic job. Our police department did. Not to say somebody didn't make a mistake out there, but I don't think it warrants a twenty-five thousand dollar investigation. Thanks.
May I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ms. Councilwoman Cockhill, there is no, there is no finding here that anybody did anything right or anybody did anything wrong right now. This is, I, I would remind everybody that, with due respect, that the board is, has issued an independent decision that they want to establish the facts. They want to understand what transpired. Nobody has indicted the police for having done something that we know was wrong, and we haven't indicted the community to say that, that they did anything wrong. Our intention is to exercise the board's independence to conduct an investigation that will establish facts that include the technical assessment of the conduct that occurred during that three-day period, which includes police as well as bystanders and people who were engaged in the protest, whatever it may be, to establish the, the the environment in which the engagements that happened between police and civilians, whether they were outsiders, whether they were protesters, whether they were just observers. What happened? Where did it happen? And was it what should have happened? And the board's independence is really what we're talking about here in terms of they, they told me to do this. They voted last night affirming their decision to work with this particular group for a very limited purpose. We have not made any finding, and we are not criticizing police or protesters or protest organizers. I just don't want you to feel that we have prejudged or going into this with some kind of a bias, Councilman.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, Elizabeth. I really am. However, my point is, you know, why are we investigating at all? Why, why are we looking into this at all when we had a minor incident and we're going to put five thousand dollars into a, a study, I guess, or you're going to call it more so? Is that right?
The, the board has an obligation to review policies and practices that affect the relationship between the community and the police. We know that that relationship was significantly impacted during those three days. The board has indicated that it is worth assessing who did what, when, where, what worked well, what didn't work well. We have injuries to police officers. We have injuries to civilians. We have to understand why those things happened, how they happened, what was the context in which they happened. We have stories that are contradictory. We want to establish the best that anybody can, the truth of the matter. And we can't do that by just issuing an opinion and a subjective interpretation of the material we have, the discussions that we have had with some of the officers that were involved. There has to be a comprehensive review. The community deserves it. The police deserve it. And, and frankly, we had an incident, we had a couple of incidents that occurred. We have to book them. We have to have established a report that says, here, this is what transpired during that time. And, and that's what we are charged with doing, and that's what we're pursuing.
Okay, and we're going to do that by hiring a company from Dallas, Texas?
No, the Independent Police Review Board is going to engage with a company that has demonstrated competence and is compatible in their philosophy to best practices. There are, is a, a local connection. We, we have a, a person here locally who works with Densus, and that would be our, one of our contact people here locally. These are experts. These people bring expertise that we do not have. We have a group that does not have a bias. They are not, they don't belong to the same clubs that police officers belong to. They don't engage in activities that are, are consistent with some of the populist movements that we are aware of. They're independent, professional experts on public order, management of, of crowd, and use of force. They're not, this, they, they come, they're, they're professionals.
Well, you know, Ms. Pittinger, I, I, you know, I do appreciate the work you do. I do feel that twenty-five thousand dollars to look at the overall scene. Yeah, I think we should be happy with the way our police conducted themselves outside the one minor incident that I'm not real sure what happened. I know I got firsthand reports from the police officers that were there. I didn't hear from any citizens as to what they thought of it. I'm sure many of you have. But, you know, I just don't feel it warrants twenty-five thousand dollars to look into it. I think it should be done internally with, between council and the administration and saying, here's what worked and here's what didn't work. I think it's pretty clear what did and didn't work, so, so I just don't feel it warrants that, but it's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members for first round? So, well, spoke. So I have a quick question, Director. If we vote to approve the allocation of twenty-five thousand dollars, but do not vote to approve the contract, what then happens?
Well, we will not be able to fulfill, I will not be able to fulfill the direct order from the board. You do, as you know procedurally, have to authorize a, a contract for us to enter into a contract, which is why we're here in the first place for the two purposes that the bills state. If you don't approve the contract for us with Densus, then what essentially, symbolically at a minimum, is that you have substituted your judgment for the board's judgment, and the board is independent. So that creates a whole different set of, of provocative thought. The independence of the board is what I'm bringing to you. This is what they wish to do. And we have asked council to support that in the manner in which you can support it, which is what the bills reflect, the transfer of funds and the approval of the board to go forward so that we can get this done in an expedited fashion. We're already at June twenty-fourth, and we had an incident that merits response. You know, that happened three weeks ago. So procedurally, no matter who we wish to engage, we have to come back and ask you to authorize a contract.
Okay.
And we're doing two things at one time, Councilman. Asking the transfer of funds and then to authorize the, the contract with a group.
Okay. So, second round, we'll begin with Councilman Kraus.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate everyone's input and their thought around this. A couple of things that came up that I'd like to have an opportunity to clarify, and it is about the no bid contract and the independence of the board. And we took that very seriously in the beginning discussions when we reached out to our budget director, Bill Urbannick. I don't know if he is here still on the call or not, but there were, there was a clear case to be made for the independence of the Citizens Police Review Board and it not fall, not falling under the criteria to, to bid this out, but that they could engage in this contract, and it was permissible. Beth, can you, can you help bring that back to me?
Mr. Urbannick explained that the board, because of its independence, does have the ability to identify with whom they wish to work, a sole source contract. We, we always return to you for authorization to enter into any contract.
Great. And then, secondly, in terms of the outcomes, that the, the invest, the, I don't even know if I like the word investigation, but we'll use the word investigation, or trying to understand the happenings of those seven or so days, that the outcomes are so that when we are faced with this again, we have improved policies, practices, and procedures that protect both protestant and police as well as public space. Have I oversimplified that?
No, that's correct. An after-action report provides a detailed analysis of all the, all the related events, the deployment of officers, the deployment of weaponry, the deployment of, I guess, tear gas is one of the big things, pepper spray, smoke, all of those aspects. It concisely reports on what transpired, what initiated, and was there an opportunity to de-escalate, or what contributed to the escalation of the engagement. It serves to establish the propriety of the police action or the impropriety of the police action. It serves to guide future protest organizers. And how do we, how can we go into an organized situation where everybody has a common goal and a common mission to come out on the other side in a peaceful, safe manner? So that's what the after-action report would provide.
So as we go deeper into this conversation over the months and months ahead about policing, and I'll leave it at that encompassing title, we are, I believe, heading more towards a conversation around not so much what equipment police officers have, but rather the deployment of it and when it is appropriate to take certain actions and to deploy certain equipment that police officers have. And I believe that, not to go too far into the weeds, but I do believe an after-action report then does assist us with a better understanding of the appropriateness of deployment in situations that involve public space, police, and protestant to have positive outcome and to effectively plan and manage pre-hand as opposed to police post-hand.
That's correct. It can be guidance for the Bureau of Police and for you as the policymakers to understand as you're getting into those discussions where we're hearing about forbidding the use of certain less lethal weapons or removing equipment from officers, that's not something we can just, you know, just do. There are circumstances under which those tools are necessary and that they are, they are, we can't just remove them from the police department's toolbox. And there are
No, I'm sorry. Please finish your thought.
No, that there were, there are certain circumstances under which those tools that are considered to be offensive by many people are absolutely necessary to protect the police and to protect the community and wherever, whoever may be in the environment where they're being deployed. We can't just, just wipe them away and pretend they don't exist.
Yeah, and I honestly, I didn't mean to open that discussion. I used it only as a means to get to the, the, at least as I understand it, my conversations with you, an after-action report assisting us with better planning, better management, understanding different ways of, or means, or times when a deployment is appropriate, and the ultimate goal being the protection of both police protestant and public space.
That's correct.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everybody, and I'll turn it back over to all the members who wish to comment.
Thank you, President Smith.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, I, the fact when we start, this all started, and we started putting legislation forward, I said, one of the things I wish we would do is wait to hear from the public, not to keep throwing legislation on the table, not to keep, because we always think we know the answer. And then when we hear from the public, we realize that we didn't know the whole answer, or we didn't know how all the solutions. And I feel like this is one of those times where we really ought to be listening to the public. If there was one message we should have gotten out of all these protests, it was that we need to listen to the public a little bit. And I don't think that we're doing that when we keep throwing legislation on the table. I really wish, I did call for a public hearing and a post-agenda and also a public hearing on race relations in the city. And so I think that we need to get those scheduled. But I want to say, I think that as well-meaning and well-intended as some of these things are, I do know that there's tension and that there's a lot of people that don't have a lot of trust in, in any investigation that, that in any investigation that the city has any part of. And whether that's, whether or not we're, you know, approving a contract, and especially when it's a no-bid contract, I think that that just raises a red flag. I think that we should be doing all we can to assure the public that we're seriously looking into these complaints. And I, I'm with you, Councilwoman Cockill. I think our police overall did a great job, but to pretend that there's absolutely nothing that we could have done differently is maybe not the best way, or maybe not accurate. And I think you'll even talk to police officers who would give better advice on some of the things that they'd like to see us do differently, or they would like to do differently. It was a learning experience, and unfortunately, we're still learning. And, but I think that having outside, you know, some outsiders looking into things might be helpful. But you're also going to interview the police during these, this investigation. It's not as if this is just going to be one side. You're going to look into everything and try to understand everything that happened, why it happened, and how we can do better next time. And, I mean, for my sake, I pray that there's not a next time that we learn to resolve these and sit down chatting with one another. But I do think that part of building the trust is working with people like Brandy Fisher, who has her independent Alliance for Police Accountability, her independent group. And I think that that means a lot to people, that we're reaching out and somehow engaging them, and not engaging them in a way that we're expecting them to volunteer, come in and do the things that they always do. But sometimes they need to be part of the contracting. Sometimes they need to be part of the benefits too, of working with the city. And not to say the city gives, turn around, give every contracts to work with us, but I think that to build trust and relationships, we have to realize that they have some value to the conversation, too. So for me, I'm going to vote for the funding, but I'm not going to vote for the contract today. But next week, I'd like to talk about, because I really don't want to start going down this road where we're throwing all this legislation on the table, and we hadn't even heard from the public. I prefer we hold all the bills, all the bills, until we hear from the public. That's why I prefer we do, because I think that that's the right thing to do. So I don't know, I'm thinking I'll vote today, but I may abstain today. I'm going to ponder as I hear people talking. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So I have a couple clarifying questions. Director, I asked you if you had additional footage for the events of June 1st. But I really want to be clear that I want to be sure that you've received the police records that you requested from either radio transcriptions, or radio messages, or police video that we've, as, again, citizens heard in media reports were somehow privileged or unable to be shared with CPRB. Do you have the records from police cameras, radios from the evening of June 1st?
Deputy Chief Stan Grecky is compiling all of the information for us. We have some councilwoman, but I will not say it is complete, because it isn't. But Deputy Chief is working with us. I have spoken to the tactical officers that were there. They have assured me that we will have access to everything we need. I have no problem, I have no, I don't, I don't disbelieve them. They have extended their cooperation for this incident inquiry, and it's underway, but it is by no means complete.
Do you have a deadline from them? Or have you, do you have a deadline imposed of some, somewhere?
No.
Again, given, as you pointed out, it's been three weeks.
The board reviewed, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, the board reviewed a preliminary report last evening. And at their July meeting, they will be reviewing the complaints, the individual complaints that we have in addition to the general inquiry that we have opened. The board meets once a month. That's why there are, you know, there's benchmarks along the way.
What is the date of the July meeting?
It is July the 28th, July 28th. We are tentatively scheduled to be in your house over there in council chambers, but given the COVID precautions, that may remain a Zoom meeting.
Sure. And then, secondly, I wanted to follow up. You said that this, the line of questioning after mine was that your Independence Board
Yeah.
of last night approved Densus Group, voted to contract with Densus. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
So, I want you to tell us kind of what were the companies that were discussed last night?
They did not discuss any further companies. What they wished to do was to solidify their intent pursuant to the discussion that we have had in the last two weeks, and where there was some question as to your, your support or your, you know, your thoughts, council's thoughts about the Densus Group. And Councilman Kraus, that's why he asked to hold it for a week, because the board said they wanted to look back at it, reevaluate their own position on it, and then they voted to proceed with the Densus Group. And again, for all the reasons that I've said before, because of the compatibility of the philosophy behind the Densus Group with their local affiliation, that it was, we wanted to expedite, we want to get this thing done. And so they reiterated their support through a vote last evening.
Okay, so, no other, no other firms have been considered in any other discussion?
No.
So again, I think that is important, that the public knows that. So thank you for your answer there. I am still going to vote no on the no-bid contract. And I have the, I just want to reiterate that the next meeting is on July 28th, and that you fully expect to have all of the police records that you need from the police department regarding the events of June 1st in hands, with ample time to have them under consideration for your July 28th meeting. And I suppose you can let us know if, if you don't receive those. And I would, I would request that you do let us know as councilmembers if you, if you do not have the records that you need for the events of June 1st.
I'll be happy to keep you informed as we move along. I remind council that we do have subpoena power. If there was any kind of resistance to providing information we felt was necessary, we would certainly use the, the board's subpoena power to obtain those documents. There are legal parameters under which we must all work, and we would certainly abide them. But I will be happy to keep you informed as we move along as to the degree of cooperation we, we have. And again, I, I've been assured by the Bureau that they will, they will cooperate. Sorry, we got a dog barking.
It's happened to me more than once during those last few months. So, thank you for your answers. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Pittinger, thank you for being here today. I appreciate all of the time that you spent with us so far. It's my impression that, or it's my understanding that you have chosen Densus because you've worked with them in the past. Is that true?
Yes.
In what capacity?
They provided us some support during the G20 and 2009, some technical support, and an after-action review of what transpired. And through the years, if we had a technical question, I felt free to contact them, and they would, they would advise me. They would give me, you know, their opinion about something. So it's been a relationship we've had since 2009.
Thank you. And what did that result in? What kind of changes did that result in? Did that change internal police policy? Did that result in changes to legislation? I'm just not as familiar, because I wasn't on council then.
My understanding is there were recommendations given to the city administration at the time, and they were officially not implemented, though my understanding from officers that were involved during that time, that there was some, they appreciated the advice. At the time, it was Mayor Luke Ravenstall, and my understanding is they were pretty much disregarded.
So I recognize that we're in a different time in a number of ways. My, one of my concerns is that during this very tight budget season, we are going to be spending $25,000 on potentially a report on what I consider to be a fairly narrow topic in this large, large topic around policing that will potentially result in internal police policy changes that, well, you tell me, are police policies available to the public?
There are, most police general orders are available on the city page under the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, their procedural manual. There are some policies that are heavily redacted to conceal information that the chief feels is, should not be open. So, most of them are available at that link on the police page.
Okay. So I guess one of my concerns is that the, a report is released, and it's on a fairly narrow topic, important, but fairly narrow, and that it's on a shelf. I'm not saying that that's necessarily what's going to happen, because again, we're in a very different time. There's a lot of momentum around change, systemic change here, both in the public, my council, the mayor's administration. So, I guess my, one of my concerns is, you know, and my, one of my questions, which is not directed at you, Ms. Pittinger, it's more directed, it's more of a rhetorical question, is why not wait until we get a better handle on all of the questions that we need answers, perhaps by a third party, around not just policing as it pertains to protests and public events, but around a whole set of aspects that the public has raised and that many think councilmembers believe needs to change in the arena of policing. Perhaps we could get a better, we could get more cost effectiveness and efficiency if we were able to combine several different issues and topics in a $25,000 or perhaps slightly larger grant for a third-party assessment than just on a topic of policing and protests and First Amendment rights. So, that's one concern. A second is a question. How does this relate to, or how does this differentiate from the investigation that the mayor has, has ordered?
Councilwoman, this is, this is the investigation that the mayor has asked us to do. We had it open on, this is the same thing. And in regard to your earlier question about how do we know it's going to do anything? The board, the chief and the mayor are required to respond to the board's recommendations within 30 days upon receipt, whether they're going to accept the recommendations, implement the recommendations as offered, or if they're going to modify and implement some form of the recommendation. So there is a turnaround obligation upon receipt of recommendations which this would offer, what they're going to do with them, so it doesn't just sit on the shelf. The five areas that we are looking at in particular relate to the use of force, the continuum of control, the traditional continuum of control, the discharge and use of firearms and less lethal weapons, and the deployment of the special response team and the SWAT team. Those are five of the dominant policies and procedures that we're measuring what we observe during that period of time against the policy standards. And if there are recommendations where we have found there was a, maybe not the best approach, or whatever that recommendation may be, the chief would have to respond to that recommendation within 30 days of receipt. And that's all public information.
Thank you. Those are all my questions and comments right now.
Thank you. Any final comments from members? Councilman Cockill.
First, I just want to say, you know, Councilwoman Strasburger, I think you're right on. I think we have to focus on the bigger issues here. And I think if we're all being honest with each other, you know, if it weren't for, I'll call it a mishap in East Liberty, I don't think we would be even talking about this funding or talking about hiring a company to look into this. You got to expect a little something when, when you get that many people together in that tense of situation. I do believe that, you know, innocent protesters were fired upon, whether it be rubber bullets or tear gas. I also believe there were antagonizers there that were provoking the police. So I think they probably made their best judgment in what they did. And I think that's very easily handled between the police chief and the mayor internally. It's, this is not an incident that made national news. It's, it's something that we need to look into, but to go hiring firms and spending that kind of money to come up with an explanation that I feel, you know, really isn't going to get us anywhere. So, I would more welcome focusing on the bigger issues. As Councilwoman Strasburger said, this to me was a minor mishap. Nobody was injured, seriously injured. And I think we should be grateful for, for the way our police and everybody and protesters conducted themselves throughout these weeks.
Councilwoman Cockill, may I respond?
Yes.
I certainly appreciate your position as city council and your concerns that you would have as a legislator and policymaker and responsible for the well-being of the city in general. This request, however, is related to the mission and the determination of the Independent Citizen Police Review Board to evaluate what happened. We did have 30, 32 injuries to 30 officers. We had at least nine injuries to civilian protesters. It is a judgment of the police review board that this merits an in-depth review to determine what happened. Did things go wrong? Did things go okay? I can honestly say, I anticipate the police are going to not like some of the things that come out of this, and they're going to like some of the things. Likewise with the community, the protesters and the civilians that were involved or present in the area, whatever, that they're not going to like some things, nor, and they're going to be pleased with some things. That ultimately, it is the board's job to listen to the community, to take public comment, which we do do. We are mandated, and we exist because of the will of the people that created the amendment to the Home Rule Charter, that created this board, to do exactly this kind of thing. I'm not disagreeing with you that we have to have a further conversation. And I think Councilwoman Strasburger is, is very prudent in saying there are a lot of issues that we need to look at. And we are looking jointly as, as the common interest and the common goal to ensure that people can exercise their rights without being fearful, and that the expectation upon the police is to be that of the guardian to protect and not as the antagonist or as the enemy. We have to get people back on a level playing field where there is respect restored and that people don't have to fear the cops, and the cops don't have to fear our people. But that mission, that is why this board exists. So while I respect and understand that it, it looks like all the city is doing this, our affiliation with the city is an independent agency created under the charter. We are not a community activist group. We are not a group of individuals with a populist agenda. We have a very defined purpose and an obligation to be true to that. And that's what we are attempting to do. We need your help. And consistent with the governor's recent message that if you have a review board, support it. Make sure it's fully resourced. If you don't have a review board, create one. So we're hopeful that across the Commonwealth, we will see more development of civilian engagement in this kind of a thing. But we've been here for 23 years. Everything we have asked for, we have had to, we've, we've had to fight for. The code is clear, what we're entitled to. We still have resistance to providing things that we're already supposed to have, that the council said we were supposed to have. And in this instance, a major event like this, the community deserves to know it's being looked at independently. And the police need that confidence that it's going to be an independent review, that we're not just out to criticize them, because we're not. We do not know precisely what transpired and what led to the escalation of the encounters that we all witnessed. That's all we're trying to do, is to fulfill our mission. And we needed your help to do so.
I want to tell you, I do feel you are vital to our city. I don't mean any disrespect towards the review board. My point is- My point is, you know, I would like to see your study when it's done, after we spend the twenty-five thousand with whomever company you, you have to use. And, uh, I'd like to see the recommendations and I'd like to see, are they fruitful? Um, did, or do they mean anything to us? Was it worth it, I guess is what I.
Understood.
Okay, thanks. We'll judge it then.
Understood, Councilwoman. Thank you.
Um, any further members? Seeing none, one, I just want to clarify, the incidents actually did make national news, um, unfortunately. Um, and that, uh, to Councilwoman Strasburger's point, I think the, the dollars being spent are of concern. I think twenty-five thousand dollars to build community trust between both the police and the community is probably worth it. Any, any further discussion? Seeing none, we should probably do a roll call vote.
Are we voting on both together?
Yes.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Cockhill. Ms. Gross.
No on bill four oh three and I on the twenty-five thousand dollar transfer that I can't read the number on.
Four oh seven.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Kraus.
I am both bills.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
You're muted. You're muted.
I own bill four oh seven and no on bill four oh three.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye on bill four oh seven, no on bill four oh three.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye on both bills.
Mr. LeValle Chair.
Aye.
On bills four oh three, we have, no, on bill four oh seven, we have aye seven, no's one, and bill four oh three, we have four no's. Four no's and what's that, three ayes.
So we have an affirmative recommendation on bill four oh seven. We do not have an affirmative recommendation on bill four oh three.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That'll now move us on to bills four twenty-one.
Bill four twenty-one. Resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Point Park University to allow students under teacher supervision to provide creative and strategic services on a volunteer basis to the city on an ongoing project specific basis, such as for marketing for twenty twenty census outreach.
Need a motion?
Uh, motion to approve brief discussion and point of order. I apologize. I think the counts, the votes might have been miscounted on the previous bill. Someone was muted. I didn't hear Councilman Burgess's vote. And in the affirmative on the second bill, there would have been Councilman Wilson, Councilman Kraus, Councilman, uh, O'Connor and, uh, forgive me, I think there was a fourth vote.
Myself.
Yeah, and Councilman LeValle. So there were four positives on the second bill, and I'm sorry, I did not hear Councilman Burgess's vote. Uh, because he was muted or out of the room.
I don't believe we have Councilman Burgess with us.
No, he's, he's gone.
He wasn't in, on the vote.
Okay. Thank you very much. I apologize.
Okay, so that takes, we're still on bill four twenty-one then, and we need a second.
Second.
Brief discussion with Councilman Kraus.
Uh, forgive me, uh, we are, forgive me, bring me back to the agenda, please. We are on.
Regarding Point Park University.
Forgive me the number again, please.
Four twenty-one.
I don't have a four twenty-one. I got you. Thank you. Uh, no discussion. Thank you very much.
Any, anyone else for discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill four twenty-two.
Bill four twenty-two, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of littler Medelson P.C. in an amount not to exceed ten thousand one hundred twelve dollars and five cent for professional legal services regarding an employment matter.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our invoices. Need a motion for invoices?
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Invoices are approved. That'll take us to our P cards for approval. I do need a motion and a second to waive council rule eleven so that a twenty-four thousand dollar expenditure under pub, under public safety can also be approved under the P cards.
Uh, motion to waive the rules?
Second.
All those in favor of waiving the rules?
Aye.
Any opposed? Rules have been waived. Now we need a motion to approve the P cards in their entirety.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Mr. O'Connor. New papers, bill four twenty-three.
Bill four twenty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a five-year professional services agreement with Cover Your Assets LLC for a web-based secondary employment scheduling system in an amount not to exceed eight hundred fifty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions?
Uh, this is our annual reallocation of, uh, Cover Your Assets. I, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Just brief comment, please.
Councilman Kraus.
So there was much discussion today in these times of, uh, difficulty that we're having of the expenditure of twenty-five thousand dollars to have a, uh, independent, uh, review, if you will, of, uh, of the nature of policing as it relates to the incidents. This almost one million dollars, nine hundred thousand dollars is used to use a secondary employment counseling company to schedule secondary detail for officers. And it's one million dollars. Just a comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith.
Yeah, I would just say that I remember we actually had a long conversation about this last year. And, and we had a lot of concerns about this last year too. But I do remember the chief came to the table and so did others, and they talked about it. But I, I'm, I'm still going to say that I have some concerns with it.
Mr. Chair.
Strasburger, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I too. Um, I have a lot of questions about secondary employment and I will, um, I mean, if we could have at least a week to have further discussion about this, um, I would appreciate it certainly to be able to gather more information and have a longer discussion about what, um, you know, how secondary employment is handled more broadly in the city for police and for public safety. I think the public has a lot of questions. I certainly have a lot of questions and it's, um, it's been a long council meeting today already. We have more to discuss today. So rather than grilling our, those at the table today, I would appreciate at least having a little bit more time to, to have a discussion. And ideally having it, you know, offline, but also publicly, yeah, uh, next week perhaps.
Might, might you be interested in, in executive session in accordance with the whole?
I would be, I would be interested in executive session and, and, uh, have that partnered with a, uh, a, a robust discussion at next week's meeting so that the public can also listen in and understand. You know, to the extent that is legal, um, why, what questions council members have and, and hear some of the answers.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I concur and I thank the other council members for bringing this up. I have also in the last six years kind of sat through some of the discussions. I, and I remember there being pros and cons to, um, the, around the notion of secondary employment. I know Councilwoman Kraus has a lot of experience here, so I, I would look forward to having a deeper understanding and so we can have a better discussion with the public. And as you point out, just for clarification, this is the, and this is an annual, like a one-year contract. Right? So that's a million dollars, nearly a million dollars for a one-year contract. Um, and it, it's, it's our job to kind of like make sure we have these discussions for the public to hear and, um, sometimes things that were the right tool or the right expenditure in, in, you know, ten years ago or in, in a certain moment um, are less relevant or needs change. So I would, I would benefit from a, a better understanding. Thank you.
Councilwoman, if I could just jump in, it's five years. I'm sorry. It's, it's.
Okay, so this is roughly a hundred fifty thousand dollars, two thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
All right, that's, that's a much different number, for example. So thank you. I didn't even catch that part and I appreciate the qualification. I don't think we have a motion to hold on the table. Do we have a motion? I'm, I'm happy to make the motion to hold one week if no one else has.
We do not at the moment. Uh, Councilman Wilson, I want one.
Oh, um, I just had a question about, uh, maybe the, the chair of the committee could answer this question, but I was wondering, are we at, um, so I, uh, let me just say that I am interested to hear the history of this. As far as I understand, this is this, this process was put in place, uh, because of prior problems, uh, with the past chief. I could be in, in what, and what, you know, transpired from that. I could be wrong. Uh, that's why I'd like more clarification as well. So in a way, this does protect just our, our city, um, the health of our city and the health of, um, our public safety department, but it would be good to, um, to understand more. Um, is there any necessary, I know this meeting is long, but is there, um, any reason we should, uh, call the public safety director to the table, uh, chair or like is this?
Uh, I mean, to be honest, we, we do this often and it's not just police, it's also EMS and other details. So if the council requests a hold and an executive session, I would just wait till that point. So then we make sure the chief and public safety director are on the call at the same time. That would be my suggestion if council wants to go with the hold.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so I think it's the will of the body. If we can get a motion to hold for executive session.
Motion to.
Okay, go ahead, Chris.
Uh, motion to hold, uh, one week or should we have a little longer to schedule the executive session?
You probably want to give yourself at least two weeks.
So let's say two-week hold, if everyone's okay with this, two-week hold does to schedule executive sessions.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Any opposed?
Uh, wait, uh, sorry, I just, I just got word. Um, this is so hard to do via Zoom, but the contract expires, I'm seeing on the thirtieth. Um, I just got this text, but obviously we, we made a motion to hold, so I'll have to talk to the public safety director and if we have to do something at Tuesday's meeting, we'll have to do something Tuesday's meeting, but, um, it looks like the contract expires on the thirtieth. Um, but I, I'm sure there's a way around that. So can we do a one-week hold just in case? And then worst case, we can hold another week after that.
So we have a, a motion to hold two-week on the table. What I would ask, working with, uh, Madam President, that she work with the clerk to schedule the executive session as expeditiously as possible.
So can we amend the two-week hold and just amend it to one week?
That would be up to Councilman Kraus if he wants to, uh.
I'll withdraw my motion for two-week hold. Uh, who had the second on that, please?
Councilwoman Gross.
Councilwoman Gross, will you?
I'll draw my second.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to hold one week for executive session.
Thank you. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held one week. That takes us to bill four twenty-four.
Bill four twenty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Smith Detection for upgrades to two-saber five thousand detection devices in an amount not to exceed ten thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
Motion to approve. A second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill is affirmatively recommended. Uh, that takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Cockhill. New papers, bill four sixteen.
Bill four sixteen, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into temporary construction easements in imminent domain with the owners of certain property in the eighteenth ward known as three eighteen Arlington Avenue and three twenty Arlington Avenue for landslide remediation work related to public roadway purposes. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, apologize. I'm running late for a meeting with a constituent. May I register aye bills on all remaining bills?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good day.
Thanks.
All right. Um, that takes us to bill four seventeen.
Bill four seventeen, resolution vacating a portion of Wool Slayer Way beginning at a point on the northernly right of way line of Wood Slayer Way to its westernly terminus in the sixth ward, seventh council district.
Motion to approve a brief discussion.
Second.
So I was briefed on this and, uh, you know, it seems pretty cut and clear, but I know this is Councilwoman Gross's district and I know how valuable every inch of property is there. So I wanted to see if she's okay with this and make sure, you know, let her comment. I defer to, to Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, so yes, um, most, you know, I always want to give the disclaimer that I've had nearly thirty, maybe more requests to vacate streets in my district in just six years because it's always someone saying, well, I could squeeze in two more townhouses and, and we have, um, turned down those kinds of requests because it's so important to, for our constituents in very highly densely populated areas to maintain small street grids. They need those streets to get to where they're going because they're trying to get there on foot. This one though, we, we done our homework on it. You know, we, we circled back with the community organizations. We reviewed all of the input on it. We have a recommendation from the director of mobility and infrastructure. Thank you, Councilman, for getting that, um, kind of background from her directly to me. And also, uh, you know, the community organizations had citizen meetings about this project and the community was okay with it. And so I'll just describe to you that this part of the alley, well, it's actually, you know, there's very long stretches of alley and street near here. This is like just the end point of one of them. And it's already broken off from further streets downhill. Um, you'll see me in the future and I hope I'll have your support in other places in, um, Lawrenceville especially, but also the strip district near the river's edge where we're trying to get back right of way that was lost like in the, you know, early nineteen hundreds. And so now that living arrangements have changed, people are trying to reconnect streets that they lost a long time ago. In this one, kind of, everybody's comfortable and it allows the development, which is more apartments, by the way, just for the record in, uh, a, a building that was just warehouse to, to get parking in a place that's beneficial for all of the neighbors. Um, so everybody is comfortable with this one. So I'm actually supporting a street vacation. For the record, I think this might only be my second one um, in six years. And it's just because it's one of these alley portions that doesn't have a negative impact to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross, uh, first deferred paper, bill one forty-one.
Bill one forty-one, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official soil facilities plan for the twenty-nine twenty-six Malmont Street Land Development Project located at twenty-nine twenty and twenty-nine thirty.
for the twenty nine twenty six Malmun Street Land Development Project located at twenty nine twenty and twenty nine thirty Smallman Street.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Thank you. I'm actually gonna hold this one and I know I keep saying this each week, but my my staff are helping me do homework and I want to say thank you to them as well. This parcel doesn't even have zoning approvals. So this building might not even be able to be built on this piece of property. So I'm gonna go ahead and motion to hold four weeks on this one. And I just want to thank you to council that I know we have all these rolling sewer modules that keep getting held, but we're doing our homework on our end to make sure that all the other permits are in place so that we're not giving them prematurely or without community input for sure. So motion to hold four weeks.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held four weeks. Bill four eighteen.
Bill four eighteen, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the CMU Fifth and Clyde Resident Hall and Campus Hub, forty seven thirty five Fifth Avenue.
Motion to approve a discussion?
Second.
So I'm gonna defer on this one, I am not fully briefed on this one. And so I apologize, my bad. And I'm just gonna defer to the councilwoman because this is her district, I believe. Councilwoman Schlossberger.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm supportive of this and the and the the next bill as well. Carnegie Mellon has been working through a significant public process. And while on this particular bill, at this particular location, there were some concerns from nearby town town homeowners. There were changes made. I, you know, I don't think that nearby neighbors got everything that they wanted, but there is, there have been some compromises and some it worked toward, I think, a lot of solutions and abatements to the problems and concerns that the neighbors had. So I'm comfortable moving this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Although, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Last bill of the day, Bill four nineteen.
Bill four nineteen, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the CMU Forbes and Dealer Resident Hall, fifty eighty seven four seven.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Similarly, Councilwoman, I'll I'll let you, if you have anything additional to add.
No, I'm supportive, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That exhausts our agendas for the day. I have gotten some emails while we've been sitting here just asking for clearly clarity, excuse me, on the denser vote, which I believe the final tally, I'm looking to the clerk, was four four, is that correct?
Four four.
Okay, which means it is affirmatively recommended.
Failed, we need five.
Okay. All right, so thank you. Any further announcements from members? Seeing none, um, let's see. Always forget the number. We do have a number of meeting announcements. Council has scheduled a cable cast public hearing for next Wednesday, July first at five PM via Zoom on Bills two hundred and two oh one as they relate to creating a Pittsburgh Commission on Racial Equity and adopting the ten commitments on racial equity. To register to speak at the briefing, please call the clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight by three thirty on July first. You may also submit written comments via email, cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. To register for a comment at council's regular standing committees meetings on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, please call the clerk's office at by nine AM the morning of those meetings. Comments may also be submitted by email. We now need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Have a good